Board of Managers meeting to order. Like to have a roll call first. Mr. Smith.
Madam President, with all managers present, there's no need to do a roll call.
Great.
Well, the minutes will note that all managers are present.
Say thank you. Next, we're on to the approval of the agenda.
If I could make a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Thank you.
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
I'd like to pull the thing about the CAC, which is down under the consent agenda. And I would like to, I don't know if I had to pull, but I'd like to discuss some things on the staff report.
And I think we can just normally discuss that, right?
Right. We can either talk about it before or after, we don't have to pull it to talk about it.
Okay, then I'm fine, as long as I can speak to those two things.
Okay, so I have a motion, I just need a second.
Second.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call for the approval of the agenda? Don't have to do that.
Just do all in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye, thank you so much.
Say all opposed.
All opposed? None?
I have to learn new protocols.
I certainly do, don't I? Okay, next, that's our public hearing on the proposed 2025 budget and levy. Anyone who would like to address the board regarding the budget and levy for 2025? Please wait to be recognized by me, state your name and full address clearly for the record, and limit your comments to no more than three minutes. There will also be another opportunity to speak on the budget and levy in December. So does anyone have any comments during the open period?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Cook.
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, it's a matter of visual, is there any way that you can zoom out on the camera so we can see everybody on the screen? Much better, thank you. So, I get to the point having to do with the agenda, first of all, I didn't see anything posted until, I actually had to refresh my screen today. It's 9:30 last night, there wasn't any documentation. So, first of all, my point is that this information wasn't posted nearly in time for any reasonable review of the budget. That being said, I don't understand, and want to note there was, are you going to make a presentation about the budget? If not, I can go through and I can mention some questions I have.
Mr. Jeffrey.
President Peterson, managers, I do have a short presentation prepared if you'd like to hear it.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
Yes, I will. I'll wait then, I think we should hear the presentation first.
Right.
Thank you.
Lot of things open. Dylan, can you make it so I can share my screen, please? There we go. All right. President Peterson, managers, just quickly go through our annual budget to this point and process we've been through and what our discussions through four previous meetings have brought us to. Again, so just to recap, the 2025 budget levy being proposed. We were proposing a total levy of $4,249,905. We project to have roughly $4 million remaining in unspent monies at the end of the 2024 year. Through grants, partner funds, and other things, we expect to have another $429,000, $430,000, leaving us total assets for 2025 of 8.7 million, roughly. We have budgeted expenditures in the amount of 6.4 million for the year through all of our capital projects, projects and program, and administrative costs. With this budget as proposed, we would have $2,298,000 and some odd change in reserves at the end of the 2025 year. So, let's talk about, actually, some questions came up, what should be in our reserves? So, GFOA, as well as the Office of State Auditor recommends an unrestricted fund balance of 35% to 50% of your fund operating revenues or no less than the first five months of general expenditures. So quickly, if we look at just our 2025 budget of 6.4 million, 35% would be 2.24 million, and 50% would be 3.2 million. We are projecting again about 2.3 million at the end of 2025 to have leftover reserves. But our capital projects are a little different than our day-to-day administrative budget and program-wide. So if we looked at just those two, so capital projects, we can, obviously, we can set the schedule to some degree so that we know when those pay applications will be coming. So if we look at it as a $3.5 million budget item for that, then we're looking at between 1.2 and 1.75 million to have our 35% to 50%. So, we would definitely make that with this reserve, and we would make, almost make the 35% of our entire savings, or of our entire fund for the year. I just want you to keep that in mind as you think about what we really want to have for a levy and leftover funds at the end of the year. So, if we break it down, this is looking at 2024 numbers compared to 2025. I did not go through each individual project and program. I really tried to just give you the broad brush stroke. So administrative costs are going down about $200,000. District-wide is going up about $200,000. And then, as we have wound up, a lot of the projects in Bluff or in Purgatory, the Riley will go up in '25 because we're going to be doing the Upper Riley. And then if we were to project out to '26, really what would happen is Riley and Bluff Creek would flip-flop with each other in there. So if we look at the levy amounts over the last three years, '23, '24, and then proposed for '25, they're at the bottom of the screen, 3.8 million to 4.25 this year. The increases from the preceding year, it was a 5% increase in '23, 6% in '24, and with this budget as presented, it's a 5% increase going into '25. Whoop, back it up. So again, these were the numbers that we talked about, leaving us with that 2.3 million in reserve. What we have done to date, July 10th, we presented a very preliminary draft budget, and the managers ordered the public hearing. July 18th at the workshop, we presented the draft budget in detail. August 7th, I was asked to come back with looking through our prior audits and what we've had leftover cash on hand at the end of each year. Tonight, we are holding the public hearing. By September 15th, I will need to submit the levy certification to the county auditors. December 3rd, we'll come back, review the budget again. Public will have an opportunity to speak, although it will not be a public hearing. And then the managers can decide if they want to go with the budget as adopted by the 15th, or if they want to adjust it down. If they want to go with it as it is, there is really nothing else to be done with the auditors. If you want to adjust it down, I would reach out to the auditors and give them that. Just go back to that, that is the end of what I have for presentations. So I'm happy to answer questions as they arise.
Thank you. Mr. Cook, again, you'd like to have a comment period. If you could please state your name and your address.
Sure, my name's Larry Cook, 471 Big Horn Drive in Chanhassen. So a couple of comments on the budget, first of all, I've already stated, I think this is, we didn't receive this information early enough to make an informed decision. Number two, certainly wasn't as detailed as we've had information in the past regarding the budget and the variations from one year to the next, especially including carryovers. One would have to do a lot of math, that could have been much simpler, simply provided to the public and would have been more informative. So I think this is a reduced presentation from what we've had in the past. But specifically as to the budget, if you want to go to the second line, I mean, I don't know what I should believe on this because your second line says plant implementation levy, and you have a 2024 projected, and it's $2,000. And that just seems kind of strange that that would be, excuse me, $2 million. And I guess I, just the way it's laid out, I'm not sure what, why it's $2 million. Are you, what are you including, not including? Because I thought that, based on your chart, we levy more than that. So, you know, anyhow, that, those are some issues. It would be much, much better, I think, for the public if we had some more information about, you know, percentage up, percentage down, and any of these columns gives people a flavor of what we're doing, what other increase, you know, costs that we have. So I will, but most importantly, you know, I have to check to this budget because as I read it, you're proposing to spend some $500,000 on an illegal project, an illegal acquisition. And we all know that I have a lawsuit pending, you know, regarding this entire matter for at least four different reasons, it's illegal. And apparently, nobody's decided that they want to change that. So I think that's a significant issue, $500,000. The public should know that that, at least in my view, and I'm pretty confident the court will ultimately view it as an illegal expenditure. So, and I'd say without any more detail, we used to have, you know, additional pages that would show us some detail of what was going to be done in these various categories. We don't have that, so it's very difficult to have any meaningful discussion or comment. So, I guess at this point, so let me check my notes here. I have one question was, how involved was the Audit and Finance Committee in coming up with this budget or approving it, et cetera? If you have an answer.
President Peterson, managers, Audit and Finance Committee has seen this once, but they were not involved in the preparation of the budget. It's been brought to the full board, as my schedule showed, three different occasions for discussion.
Well, it just seems to me that this would be one of the most important issues that the Audit and Finance Committee would have to deal with, other than the audit, which I've already mentioned, I think is deficient in many ways. And we'll end up seeing what the state auditor says about that. But at that, this point, those are the total of my comments regarding the proposed budget.
President Peterson.
Yes, Manager Crafton.
I just wanted to say, I mean, all of us went through, we looked at the detail, we went through all of this stuff. I thought we had a fairly robust conversation about what was there, and we were satisfied with what staff came up with, and it seemed reasonable. I mean, I suppose there can always be some kind of crisis, but I thought we gave it a thorough review as a board, so I just wondered.
Add that, thank you.
President Peterson, managers, just to clarify, Mr. Cook brought up this $2 million line item. In our Excel spreadsheet, it is called projected because it's what we think based on the month that we're at. So this $2,9306 is what we have received for levy payments thus far through this year. As you managers are aware, we get our levy payments twice per year, once in about June and once in about December. So that's why that number does not match up with the other ones. This was posted to our website on the, on our budget page after our workshop.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Manager Cook. And at that point, we'll go to matters of public interest. Do we have anyone who would like to discuss anything with the board? If you would like, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Yes, Mr. Cook.
Thank you. My name's Larry Cook, 471 Big Horn Drive. Again, I apologize, I have to look in a different direction to look at my sheet. First of all, as I stated at the last meeting, I don't believe that this Board of Managers duly constituted. I believe its actions are voidable, at least it's not entirely void. It's in violation of multiple Minnesota statutes, including but not limited to 103D.311 subdivision 3, and I won't go through the other details as the minutes that I saw did a fairly decent job, I think, of capturing my, my notes. One thing I wanted to mention is that in the minutes, I believe that, in my opinion, Attorney Smith mischaracterized the judge's ruling, which only had to do with the injunction. So I just bring that up because I disagree with his characterization. And ultimately, that'll be sorted out. As I said, I don't believe that our position as managers, Crafton and Nelson are not managers, in fact, on this basis. And this board does not comply with the requirement to have the managers fairly represent the various ecologic areas. First of all, there's continuing violations of the open meeting law, not the least of which was the lack of having the presentation available. So, again, there's also continuing violations of the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act. I have several requests that have been sitting out there, not responded to or responded to in part, not followed up with. And I also note that, looking at the report, apparently, this board is going to continue to pay me the compensation expenses that are due me. And therefore, you know, that will have to be unfortunately settled in litigation as it is. Also, you have a resolution, reason I bring these up is because you don't provide for individual periods of comments, but you come in with a resolution to delegate authority. I believe that attempt to do that in the manner in which you're proposing to do it violates our governance manual, and therefore would be ineffective to do so. Also, I'm continually disappointed in the CAC for failing, really, I think, to adequately serve its purposes and set forth, you know, in the statutes. And I really do wish they would take more active view in serving the purposes for which they were formed. Again, I have to note, your accounting practices violate, you know, standard accounting principles. Your credit cards are not being processed or reported correctly. You're treating credit card vendor, credit card companies as vendors. They are not, they are means of financing. But again, you continue to violate basically basic accounting principles. And perhaps we'll have to see what the state auditor has to say about that. And going to a couple of items on the staff report.
This concludes your three minutes, Manager, or Mr. Cook, this concludes your three-minute comment period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the reading and approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the August 7th meeting?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 7th meeting as written.
I'll second, I do have one comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Page eight, there's a line 160. He said the district "we" will receive, so just strike the "we." He said the district will receive.
That it?
Yep.
Anybody have any other changes? If not, I think we can just say all in favor of approving the minutes. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Onto the minutes of the August 7th workshop.
Approve the minutes?
Thank you.
I second the motion.
Great. Any changes, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes for the August 7th workshop, say aye. Opposed? None. Super, back to, onto item six, reports. The Citizens Advisory Committee Report. I believe we have a representative from the CAC? Need to hand you a mic.
Can, does that work? Okay. Hi, managers, and Manager Jeffrey, I'm Michelle Frost, I represent the CAC tonight. I have only a small matter that we discussed. I think it was mentioned in our last report to you. We have been discussing matters of what the CAC can do to support water conservation efforts within the district. We had a robust discussion about lots of ideas, mostly a brainstorming session, with the end result being that we felt we needed to meet with our counterparts in the cities and see what the city, the cities and that make up the district are doing around water conservation efforts. So we wanted to combine our efforts with them and see if we could coordinate with the city. So, within this month, we have four volunteers who are gathering some city information, and then we will compile that and kind of take the next steps from there.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions or comments?
Peterson, I have a comment. Well, Michelle, I know we're talking about water conservation. I also noticed as I was reading that Woodbury has some pretty, they have like moisture sensors and some other stuff in their irrigation that might be worth somebody looking at other than just the local watershed district.
Okay, thank you.
Just as a possibility. And I just wanted to clarify, in some of your schedules, I said, because the bird ecology, I actually really want to go see, and I think, I'm not sure if the date in the minutes is correct. I think it says the 16th?
I think the...
Oh, that's right.
B says the 21st.
One of them just had a date I wasn't sure about. So I just wanted to make sure it was at your next regularly scheduled meeting.
Uh, let me double.
It was something that was, maybe it was habitat restoration, maybe that was the one. Yeah, that was on the 19th of November, that's the one that was.
Our next, we typically meet on the third Monday, so that will be this coming Monday.
Yeah, so I think it's November, the one that's on a Tuesday.
Okay.
So just, to verify that, I just wanted to make sure. I enjoy those presentations, so I want to be aware.
We can clarify that.
And then with the Board of Manager workshops, I think those are at 5:00 PM, not 7:00 PM, so that you've got it kind of making sure people know what's what on the minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Manager Nelson, we can correct that.
Any other questions or comments from the CAC?
Are there more than one of us that want to attend the Andy's?
Well, I suppose we could ask that question.
I actually spoke to Manager Jeffrey about this, saying that before, previously, a bunch of us had said we'd like to be there, and he said he was going to potentially notice that so that we, it would make it clear.
I'm sorry, I missed.
The bird ecology lecture, that if we had at least three managers, that you were considering just noticing that.
Yeah, so if President Peterson, managers, if more than two managers would like to go listen to Mr. Forbes' presentation on ornithology, just let me know, and we will notice it as a meeting, that there will be a quorum at, but don't talk about business, please, please. But yeah, that's fine, we can do that.
Well, as long as we're on that topic, who would like to be the board representative for that meeting?
Sounds like all of you.
I can, but I want to be at the meeting for sure.
I will.
Okay.
For Bonnie.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
Okay, Bonnie's it, well, we'll just say Bonnie's it for this time.
We're all going to be there, but...
But I assume Manager Nelson, Duvel, and Crafton are all going to be in attendance?
Yes.
Are you, either of you two?
Not in town. Okay, thank you so much. And now we're on to the Audit and Finance Committee Report. Any questions on that report at all from any of the managers? Hearing none? The August Staff Report. Any questions on the August Staff Report, comments? Yes, Manager Crafton.
I just, I would like a little bit more description, and I don't know if the people are there. I was wondering a little bit more about the detail behind the DEI. The RFP has been put out, it'd just be nice to know a little bit about where they're going with that.
President Peterson, Manager Crafton, Eleanor Mahan, who is our representative on it, has the poor unfortunate task of dog sitting in Hawaii right now. But I will ask her to reach out to you and talk to you about that.
Okay, yeah, no, there's, it'd just be like, I'd love to have more detail on some of the stuff that's in here because people are doing such really good stuff.
President Peterson, Manager Crafton, I don't know if you had opportunity at the last annual conference to be a part of, I forget her name from Capital Region, but they hosted the DEI, and that really went over a good kind of umbrella of the things they're working on. But I'll have Eleanor reach out or prepare a technical memorandum of...
Okay, well, just, you know, for what we're doing, so. I guess another thing I wanted to bring up was too, I've been on a couple, there's a series called Urban Tree Canopy, and they're actually being done by Nature Canada. I've been on two of them, but there are some metrics for tracking urban tree canopy and some of the results. So, in about 60 days, they're supposed to be, the recording's supposed to be available with all the materials, but I just, I didn't know, I kind of notified Bloomington too, because I thought, well, if there's something tracking, that might be something that'd be of interest to us as we move forward, so. And I just wondered, are we doing anything with a metric for resiliency at all, or are we...
President Peterson, managers, at this point though, we have finished up the modeling. Our next step will be to apply for, hopefully, the PCA grant will still be available there to put in mitigation techniques. So I don't know if Engineer Sobek, if you have anything to add to that, but right now, that's where we're at, hoping for the next round of grants to get that and start working with the cities to identify actual mitigation.
It sounds like we've got a really robust, well, it's farther down on the agenda in terms of the ecosystem health for our lakes and vegetation management. But everything I'm hearing where I'm at with, at the state level, et cetera, is about resiliency. So I guess that I had wanted to bring that up at some point about, because we had a discussion at one point about how do you measure health, ecosystem health? And it just seems to me that we might want to look at resiliency because it would be more moving. It would be more flexible in terms of, I mean, things are going to change. If you've got an ecosystem, it's not going to be a static situation. So I just wanted to mention that to see if it's something we should think about.
And to your point, President Peterson, managers, the, all of the state grants now do include that within it. Lissard Sam's, that was a very big part of the presentation, was what are you doing for resilience on this project?
So it might, might position us better a little bit? Okay, I just thought I'd bring that up. But it sounds like, I'm just so impressed with what staff's doing, and well, appreciate you. And then I had one other thing. So I noted in the engineer's report that you've been working and brainstorming with the staff on what's coming up with visioning, et cetera. And then you have in here in the staff report, the watershed plan, that you're... So I'm impressed with the fact that you're reaching out, you're coming up with a process for us to move forward. But I wanted to share something, comments that I put together, because we're kind of in a new day, and we haven't had a lot of cohesiveness of this board. It's been hard to get to know each other. So that's what I would like to share. I think that we need to take a halt before we go too far, so I'll just... But basically, I think that as managers, it would be really nice if we could learn more about each other, maybe do the Strength Finder thing like we've done in previous years, but to see what kind of strengths and things that we bring to the, to the board, and, yeah.
Am I assuming correctly that this is probably going to be part of the workshop that we're having, where the person from what, Drive?
Drive.
So, President Peterson, managers, I'm hoping... I'm hoping everyone can join us, October 17th. That will be a, a part of that meeting. We have also had numerous discussions about getting together out at the property.
Yes.
Prior to snow flying. And if people would like to do that, I think the staff, we would love to go back out there again, so.
This is a little bit different, what I'm proposing here, so. I just think that things have been really dysfunctional for a long time and I think it's really important to come together as managers and to, you know, just talk about what our priorities are. I, I've been really excited that we've seen more of that sharing during the manager reports. So, I mean, people talked about partnerships with the cities. Bonnie, you mentioned it and President Peterson mentioned it last time. And it just seems like I would like to have more clarity on building some cohesiveness just amongst the managers before we go into the rest of the process. So, I don't know where the rest of you are on this, but I feel like we've been in a kind of dysfunctional mode and and if we don't build some cohesiveness and have some clarity about exactly who we are, what we want to do and, and how we want to proceed and, and how we want to interact with, with the board. And, but to me, the visioning and the mission statements and the values and all that comes later. But I would, I guess I would just like to have some conversations as, as a board to build a little more cohesiveness so that we we know exactly where we are. We don't want any more attacks. We don't want any more sabotage. We don't want any more dysfunctional behavior. And I just feel like we need some, and some kind of conversation about cohesiveness before we move forward.
So, what does everybody else think about the idea?
I think that's a fabulous idea. You know, I think coming from, from the outside sector, from public types of organizations, I've always been accustomed to be able to talk to people, groups of people, informal, formal, having meetings. And for me personally, this has been a really difficult two years to get to know the people, the staff, just kind of where they're coming from, the same thing that Jill is talking about right now. So, I don't know how we do this, but I don't know how other public bodies do this. But there must be some way to get to know, to get to know each other in a format that is not a noticed, open meeting type meeting where, I mean, I don't, maybe it isn't possible, but I'm just saying, not possible? Louis is shaking his head, no.
Mr. Smith.
President, just to jump in, anytime a quorum of the board meets, it needs to be in a noticed and open setting. But that doesn't govern your agenda. Your agenda can be a retreat-like discussion, a strategic planning discussion, plenty of time on an agenda for managers to exchange, you know, backgrounds and information. But there's not a provision in the opening law for having a, a, a non-noticed, not publicly accessible.
So in other words, I mean, so if somebody wanted to talk about their background, you know, just in a general setting, does this mean it's a public meeting then? I mean, this is public information for everybody at that point?
Anyone who would be attending the meeting.
Attending the meeting. Okay.
President Peterson, managers, for instance, if we were to go to the property and have lunch, have a barbecue, that could be our entire agenda. We would just have to notice it and the public could show up and join us if they would like.
Make sure there's enough hot dogs for everybody.
Some of them might get the, they won't get, all get the Schweigerts.
Bonnie, what do you think?
Yes, I, I, I like the idea of getting to know each other. I'm not sure, cohesive is an interesting statement. I don't know that we're all going to ever agree on everything, but I like the idea of absolutely understanding everybody's strengths and their weaknesses and where they come from and what they'd like to accomplish.
David.
I don't have any objections. I guess, you know, I've been on the CAC and the board long enough where I kind of feel like I know a lot already, so. But, you know, if it helps us.
So, would you object to us trying to do something out at the property where we actually have some sort of a format? Or we add this on at the beginning of our intended outside consultant with a little bit of time there? How, how do you think?
President Peterson, managers, so the agenda that is being put together for that meeting on October 17th, the first part of it is, call it icebreaker, call it what you want. We could expand that portion, condense the other portion, because the other portions are, a lot of it is, is Mr. Smith's wonderful presentation, even though I'm just pilfering it from him about, you know, what are the laws that govern us? What is our roles and responsibilities? So, we can certainly shift the dedicated time of each of those parts to expand that portion. That wouldn't be a problem at all. In fact, that's kind of what I was hoping to get out of this was so that it was a certain comfort level amongst all the managers and staff.
I wouldn't mind doing that on the property, though.
I, I think it would be great to have it on the property. I want to see it. I want to get an idea of what's there now.
Is the house accessible, accessible at all?
President Peterson, managers, the house is accessible. I will leave it at that. I think, I think most people will choose to sit outside in a chair.
How about the pool?
No.
Yeah, you go ahead. I need to skim a thing or two off the top.
So, I guess if I'm voting, I'd say let's combine it with a trip out to the property. How about that? How does everybody feel about that?
That would be great.
Yes? Could we manage that somehow, Mr. Jeffrey? And I would say that that probably would be coming prior to our, our actual time where we're sitting down during the workshop, just so that we have sort of that common basis there. And that gives us a chance to see it before things start really changing at the property for fall, too. Is that possible?
I don't have a problem with, sure.
Great, all right. So then, we'll leave that to you to maybe try to come up with some alternate dates or some potential dates for us. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments at all on the staff report? Yes?
President Peterson, there was a item on Lake Lucy that was, said it was going to bring up to the August meeting in the, in the report. Sorry, I'm not, my scrolling isn't working. Under the Districtwide Regulatory Program, 1811 Lake Lucy Wetland Restoration Project. I was looking for that and I didn't see it in our, it's just in the update, so I couldn't find what you're referring to.
Don't have anyone.
Lake Lucy Lane violation.
Like Susan?
It says 1811 Lake Lucy Wetland Restoration.
Violation.
That's a violation. We, yeah.
And it says, was it brought to the board in August?
We have talked to the board several times about this. There's enforcement action against them right now. And we will be, we will be talking about it actually a little later tonight on this agenda. That's the Swanson's property.
Okay. I just, I couldn't find it on the agendas or that particular permit. I was looking for that.
Okay, any other questions before we move to the?
President.
Yes?
So, on the, this, this report, I mean, this is, this is one of the most really great reports that we have and it's, it's really a, a good synopsis, I think. Get an idea of what everybody's doing. So I really appreciate it. It takes a long time to go through it. You start looking at different sections and how they connect. I guess the one area that I make a comment on is in the education and outreach. And Liz, if you're listening. So I'm, I'm by no means a social media expert. And from what I read and hear from my kids, that most of the things that I connect to on social media are not what the kids connect to anymore. So, I guess my, my comment is, should we be looking, or maybe we are looking and it just isn't showing up in the report of looking at some other of the social apps that are out there? Particularly the ones that might, that might be more attuned to the, beneath the 40 crowd, beneath the 30 crowd. Because I think as an organization, I think we, one of the things we're trying to do is to connect to the young people. And, and I know we're doing the things, the outreach programs at the schools and things. But that's not where a lot of the kids get their broad views of the world and, and it seems like social media is it. So if there'd be some way that we could connect that. And then along the same lines, and I know this is an old person's perspective, but my wife and I have been watching the Channel 11 Saturday morning program for many years and it's about a two and a half hour program. And it's about things that are going on in the Twin Cities. But out of the two and a half hours, they must spend about 45 minutes, maybe an hour, talking about plants, growing plants, outdoor things with nurseries. And it sure seems like we should figure out a way to get a 10-minute spot on that show on a Saturday morning. And again, it's not necessarily addressing the young kids, but it's a, it's a way to get broad media exposure to some of the concepts that we're talking about. Again, I have no idea how you do that, but, but they have food spots and they have a lot of programs or a lot of spots about different nurseries around town, talking about vegetation. I think at one time they even did talk about some of the things that might fit into some of the concepts we might be dealing with. But anyway, it seems like that would be an interesting area to see if we could get a foot in the door.
President Peterson, if I'm not mistaken, then I think manager Duvel just offered to make a dance video for TikTok, then.
Working on my moves.
Thank you, manager Duvel.
I could, I guess, I mean, I think that's an intriguing idea. It's, and I don't know how, whether there'd be, it'd be received or not, but like, just like the, when we went on the Preserve tour, it was absolutely amazing. So it would be, that would be a neat thing for, where we're doing cost share projects, to have people be able to see and hear about the value of some of those things.
Mm-hmm. It's a good idea.
Well, we're hoping Liz is hearing all of this and taking another advisement.
Putting more on her plate.
Eleanor runs much of our social media, so.
Okay, anything else on the staff report before we go to the engineers' report? Any comments? No comments or questions for the engineers' report? I'm not hearing anything. So then we're on to the August Regulatory Report. Any comments or questions there? Okay, hearing none. I'm looking for a resolution, a motion to approve Resolution 24-053, receiving our reports.
I'll move that we receive the report, 24-053.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion to adopt Resolution 24-053.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None. We already know that Tom's going to be the representative at the next CAC meeting, so now we're on to the.
Oh, Bonnie, excuse me.
Official. Jeez. But we have two other people, so it'll have to be noticed. Now we're on to the consent agenda. So, we have one item that's pulled, which is item A3 about the administrator registering the two CAC members for the annual conference. Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve, adopt Resolution 24-054.
I'll move adoption of Resolution 24-054.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, David. And all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, so now we're on to new business.
Are we going to say anything about the one we pulled? Oh, it's, well, okay, it's under new business, sorry.
Right. Okay, so now, manager Crafton, would you like to ask a question or make a comment?
I would. It's just been a real priority for this board for a number of years. Send three citizen advisory people to, to that conference and for the annual meeting. And we just suddenly got a million or two in reserves, so it just seems like it, it's not that much of a hardship. And I know that, that our administrator's doing a good job of monitoring the money, but I think there's, the Citizen Advisory Committee is full of people that are just amazing. They are interested, they're discussing things, they're being proactive. And I just think it's, it would be nice if we could fit one more person in to be able to, so that they could see what's going on at that, at the annual meeting.
As I.
I don't know if Bonnie's been there.
As I said to administrator Jeffrey, pretty much a lot of us are on this as a kind of a feeder. The CAC is sort of the feeder group that feeds us because it's sort of a place of gathering knowledge and education and all of that. So is there a way we can make sure that we get three rather than two?
So, if, President Peterson, managers, throw this back at all of you. If you refrain from having any plethora of special meetings or continuations from your, there would be budget in your per diem to transfer out of there to cover another person. Otherwise, we'd need to go into reserves and, and pay for that other person.
Yes.
President Peterson, I would be willing to give up my per diem for.
You don't have to give up your per diem.
I won't take it. Just put it toward the bill. I mean, but I just think it's really important. So if that's, if that's what's needed, then.
And the line item under CAC that they've got some kind of an amount there that.
So they, President Peterson, managers, they have $5,000 for that CAC and that will cover two people.
Okay, okay, so I get it. That's, that was the budget for this, all right.
I figure I have four meetings, so.
I would say that we have enough in reserve to.
We could take it out of reserve as well.
Okay, does everybody have a general consensus about taking it out of reserve?
Yes.
I believe that's the general consensus. Thank you so much. Okay, next, we're looking to accept the August Treasurer's report. Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, David. I move to accept the August Treasurer report.
I'll second.
Thank you.
You want any more comments on that at all?
Yes, any questions, any comments? Hearing none? All those in favor of accepting the August Treasurer's report, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Nay? Nothing? Next, approve the payment of the bills, which I'm assuming you meant to have that as some sort of a motion, correct? Mr. Jeffrey? I don't have that actually highlighted on.
There is no resolution for this, so it's, yeah.
I will move that we pay the bills.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the payment of the bill, say aye?
Aye.
Nays? We're five zero. D, Resolution adopting the budget and levy and authorizing the administrator to submit to county auditors.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-055, adopting the 2025 budget and levy as presented.
Thank you. Manager Crafton, second. Any comments, any discussion before we vote? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-055, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Nay? There's no nays?
I'm president.
Yes?
Since this is a resolution to adopt your annual budget and tax levy, we'd recommend a roll call.
Okay. Would you please roll call us, Mr. Smith?
On adoption of Resolution 24-055, the 2025 budget and levy, manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duvel?
Yes.
Manager Nelson?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next item is the modification of permit 2024-006. Would you like to speak upon this? Mr. Sobek or Mr. Jeffrey? You need to say anything.
Okay. President Peterson, managers, so manager Nelson actually brought this up earlier. So if, if you'll remember, we had a wetland violation, went across two properties, the Swanson's property and the Price's property. In doing so, they needed to, one, meet the Wetland Conservation Act restoration order and engineer Sobek, staff Nicolai, and staff Dick. And Engineer Sobiak, Staff Nicolai, and Staff Dick Houseon worked with the TAP to try and come up with a solution that would both meet all rules and meet the restoration. The Price's, who were tenants that night, have complied with all conditions of approval for that permit. Those conditions were the name and contact information of the individual responsible for the restoration and day to day maintenance of road control, the recordation, proof of recordation of a maintenance declaration to maintain the buffer and structures put in place, as well as a financial assurance. The Price's have met, as I said, met all three of those conditions. These Swanson's have, through their attorney, raised issue with the maintenance declaration. They are requesting things be placed in the maintenance declaration that, first of all, would have to come back to this board for approval. And second of all, in some instances, defeat the purpose of the maintenance declaration itself. The Price's have asked if they could move forward on their own. The problem is, they applied jointly with the Swanson's for one permit application. So it isn't as simple as parsing them out into A and B. However, Engineer Sobiak has noted that the one primary structure is really splits the two properties and could be moved just a short distance and be entirely on the Price's property. The bond that is in place covers the entire property. I'm going to leave that introduction. And I'm going to ask Mr. Smith to discuss some of the implications of doing this and why it might not be as simple and straightforward. And then looking for guidance from the managers as to how best approaches. Mr. Smith?
Okay, managers, let's begin with the recommendation that I think your administrator, your engineer and attorney would make, which is, we do not generally recommend combined permit applications of multiple property owners. And I don't think it was recommended in this instance. But the property owners wanted to present it that way. And so one of the property owners posted a bond for the, as a requirement of the permit. The district requires permit applicants to post financial assurances, bonds, or credit. They guarantee that if somebody screws up in the project, the district has a recourse to cover the costs of going on to the property and remedying the problem. So in this case, it's it's fine that the Price owners have decided they'd like to sever their part of the permit. But they posted the bond to cover both properties. And I'm reluctant until we learn more to allow the release of that bond because right now the violation is sitting on the Swanson's property. And the only recourse the district has right now in its hands is a bond posted by the Price's to cover Price and Swanson. You're following me? So I think it's fine to allow the Price's to sever their permit application since they've met the other conditions, they've met all the conditions to proceed with the work, but not allow the release of the surety. The condition being that they leave the surety in place. I think that the next part of the conversation is about an alternative for how the work could be done in a different way. And that will maybe inform some of this also.
So the other portion would be, well, if, if, if the Price's move forward with their work and bond that portion, the Swanson's still do not have a permit to move forward with any of their work. We are at some point going to be bringing enforcement action to this board on this property. Right now, that enforcement action will be against both the Swanson's and Price's, even though the Price's have been fully cooperative and compliant with everything throughout. So as Mr. Smith said, we could leave, just leave that bond in place covering it all. Which case then the Price's are liable for the Swanson's work. The other would, I don't even, Mr. Smith, I mean, my preference was.
Moving the work on to the Price's property.
Yeah, so that would be to move all of the work to the Price's property. So the ditch check, let me share it with you, so we're all looking at the same thing. So the ditch check that is right now on the Swanson's property, which will control the outlet elevation, would then be moved on to the Price's property. And they could complete all of the work. Well, wait, before I say that, Engineer Sobiak, would that be all of the work?
There's a small amount of ditch grading on the Swanson's property, lateral would be done.
Is anybody else having internet connectivity issues? Scott, if you've got it up, could you share your screen, please? What?
I'm not.
Oh, okay, I'm in the room. I think I can share it now. Share, I apologize, managers.
Manager Peterson?
Yes.
While we're waiting, may I ask Scott a question?
Sure. Just look at my.
Has the Swanson's, have the Swanson's given any indication of being willing to do even that small portion of work or anything?
Zero indication.
Zero. And is there an additional expense to moving the work on, most of the work on to the Price's property?
Managers, moving the control structure for this out, the outlet from the wetland, we're talking about moving it maybe fifteen, twenty feet. So there would be no additional cost or.
Okay. And the Price's are open to this possibility?
I believe.
President, yeah, President Peterson, managers, the Price's brought this up as the initial solution. Can we just go ahead and do all of the work? And at that time, not knowing that, so this green area here is the control structure. So that will set the outlet elevation for the wetland where it's supposed to be. This is their property line, and as so often is true, and it looks like they've got a bust. But that's theirs to deal with, not ours. So if they were to move it back, as Scott said, fifteen or twenty feet, it would all be on the Price's property. Initially, when I met with them, I had thought it was further off property, which would mean additional engineering, additional hydraulics. But in this case, it would be a nominal change that would not materially affect what's being proposed. So I think that would probably be the most elegant solution in this case. And the Swanson's would be responsible for, is it this portion here, Scott? Or is it another portion of the?
That's the main channel.
It's this. So this is the, this is the main channel, so it's this right here that.
Correct. So roughly a hundred and fifty feet of that lateral.
Yep.
So it just seems to be the wrong thing to do to go after someone to cooperate with us. Put the bond, everything possible. I'm in total agreement of shifting the the structure onto their property. Let them get their section of it done. And let's proceed against the other property owner as we need to, as a separate. That would be what I think is the best thing to do.
President Peterson?
Yes.
So what's the remaining if we do split it and the main surety bond goes? Is there, you said it's going to be a much smaller amount of work to be done? Is it, what, do you have an estimate for?
President Peterson, Manager Nelson, so the bond would remain in place for all of the work that the Price's put up.
Oh, still do.
But once that all of their work is done, then we could bring it back to the board to either reduce the bond to what remains. Or if the board so chose, they could say, well, now let's just go after the Swanson's, make them put up a bond to do the remainder of that work.
Did you have a sort of an estimate of what kind of, for the rest of the work is?
The overall quote that was given to them by Minnesota Native Landscapes was eleven thousand plus, like eleven thousand six hundred. So we're looking at less than a thousand probably to do that work.
So pretty.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion from us?
I'm sorry.
Do you need a motion from us?
Yes. And it's going to be, whoa, what will this motion be?
This got kind of modified a little bit from the modification.
I have one other question.
Go ahead.
So in terms of the financial assurance, that's not going to be a hardship if we don't release that, right? For not, for the cost of doing whatever work.
President Peterson, managers, one of the Price's concerns were that they are snowbirds and they are tired of being snowbirds and are going to move down to Florida. So they want to sell this property. And that's part of their concern is they want to get this lien off of their property. The placement of the bond itself was not a hardship. It's the ramifications that if it has to remain in place indefinitely, that is the hardship to them. So I think once, if they can execute the work, they're going to be happy because then they can move forward.
Thanks.
Does that answer everybody's questions? All right, tell us what you would like us to do for a motion.
Madam President, I think we would recommend the board adopting a motion that would authorize the administrator to bifurcate permits into permits A and B, one being for the Price's, the other being for the Swanson's. And approving a permit modification as to the project, moving the ditch check or that retraining structure to be moved on to the Price's property to allow the work to proceed on the Price's property. And to then direct the administrator to report back on the status at the next meeting.
Sounds like a wonderful motion, I just need somebody to actually.
I'd like to make the motion.
I would like to, and to maintain the surety bond for.
Yes.
Both of the properties.
That would be a wonderful thing, too. Thank you. Okay, so I have a motion, I need a second.
Oh, I think that was a second with.
Was that a second?
With the.
That's a friendly amendment?
Do you?
I accept the friendly amendment.
Thank you. Would you like a roll call vote on this, Mr. Smith? Or are we okay in an aye? Okay, so all those in favor of the motion plus the little bit of a modification there, say aye.
Aye.
No opposition, so we're go on that. Next, looking at the task order for BAR for refinement of the North Lotus Lake Concept Plan and additional shareholder engagement. So they'd like to talk about this.
I'll talk, and then if Engineer Sobiak feels that there's germane information that's been left out, I'll let him jump in. President Peterson, managers, if you remember, two years back now, we looked at all of the myriad of Little Lotus Lake projects that we had throughout the lake. And we said, is there a way to combine it in meeting with the city of Chan Hassen? They also have several road projects coming up in the area. So in working with them, we identified North Lotus Lake as as a good spot for a, for a BMP to be put in place. In talking with the Chan Hassen Parks and Recreation Committee, with staff at Chan Hassen, with neighbors in the area, as well as with staff internally, we felt that this would be a very good opportunity to make a destination park, make it a stormwater park rather than just put a stormwater BMP in a park. If you're familiar with the former Ford plant in Minneapolis, or in St. Paul, rather, there are areas where the stormwater itself is a feature, where you can make it interactive, you can make it educational. So what I have asked BAR Engineering to do is to prepare a modified scope that would allow for this additional engagement with different party holders, stakeholders, excuse me, so that we can come back with a more fully vetted plan for the managers to consider, as well as for Chan Hassen City Council to consider, Chan Hassen Public Works to consider. So that's what this task order is intended to do.
Comments or questions?
Comment, Manager Peterson. So when the plan comes back, will it have like options within the plan for how far you want, we want to go with it?
President Peterson, Manager Nelson, yes. So it would be more of a feasibility report or an engineer's report of options and then with costs associated with those, so we would decide where to go.
And we'd have a partner potentially with the city then on this?
President Peterson, but Manager Ziegler, yes, we do have partner with the city. The way this is going to work is, the way we are envisioning it working is, let's say that they do a road project and they need sixty five percent of the credits that are produced in this. And they will pay sixty five percent of that cost to recoup that credit. If they need fifteen percent, so it could be a wide range of what they need. But they're going to need most of it, as I see it. Believe that Engineer Sobiak had something he wanted to.
The one thing that I'd just like to add in the task order, we've got a task in here to engage an artist.
Oh, yeah.
To be part of the process. It would basically be developing a request for proposal. So we can interview a few folks, see who the district wants to work with, and then bring them on board early in the process, as opposed to after the BMP is designed, figuring they're going, you know, let them help us, how this fits best in the site, so forth. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, yeah. South Washington, as well as Ramsey, Washington, both worked with artists on projects. And that was a comment that they both made, is that we should have brought them on at the beginning rather than the end. So.
I think this is a swell thing. I'm all for this.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty four dash zero five six.
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, so I can't remember what I was going to say. So the, when you're talking about the credit, you're talking about the MS four permit? Or what? They need a credit, you said.
President Peterson, managers, though, they have several road projects that are in that watershed. So it'd be credit that they need to meet their stormwater requirements for those road projects.
But they're, they've expressed support, you've got that in here already, so.
Yep.
It seems like a no brainer, thanks.
Okay, looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Passes, five to zero, five to zero. Next, this is about the agreement with Land Bridge for three years of maintenance on the Restored Prairie at St. Hubert's.
President Peterson, managers, this is the St. Hubert's project. Little background, just to refresh people's venue memories, because it's been a long time. And some of us weren't actually wrong for it. It was an opportunity project that came with St. Hubert's Catholic Schools in Chan Hassen. As part of that project, we put in a tree trench, a rain garden, and restored roughly five acres of prairie on theirs. And then they have put in living in these areas with stone structures set into amphitheater type conditions. We released the last of the retainage from Mingers in twenty twenty three, early twenty twenty three. And that was after the first year of establishment of the prairie. The subcontractor on that traversed Sioux out of St. Peter, Minnesota, became non-responsive and did not perform any more maintenance on that site. It has since become dominated by leguminous species and Canada thistle solely. I met with Wyatt Held from Mingar Construction to discuss this with them. What we happened upon and what I'm bringing in front of the managers to see if you would agree is that Mingar will pay Land Bridge to prepare the site, to remove all noxious weeds, invasive weeds, and non-native species, to replant the entire prairie and to replace any trees on their. to replant the entire prairie and to replace any trees on there as part of the plan as was put in the original specifications that were provided to traverse to Sioux. And then the district would take over the three-year maintenance of that prairie to make sure that it is established properly. Land Bridge will have two separate agreements, one with Mingar Construction to do the actual planting and one with the district to do that three years of maintenance. That agreement has been drafted by Smith Partners, by Mr. Welch and is included with this. What I am asking is for permission to enter into that agreement with Land Bridge so that we can get this prairie working and get them using their outdoor classroom and we can start doing our education outreach with them there. The funding for this would become out of our repair and maintenance fund. And we do have adequate fund in there to cover this.
Any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is a redo, basically?
President Peterson, Manager Duval, yes.
Simple as that?
Wyatt.
Almost as simple as that?
Almost as simple as that, yes. The tree trench and the rain gardens were established and the school has taken over maintenance of those and those are doing fine.
We toured this, right?
Yes.
A year ago or so?
Yes. Yes, no maintenance means it's going to look terrible in a very short period of time. It's a big problem. So, yes, I'm fully in support of this. I, there's a lot of people that go in and out of that parking area and there's a lot of kids there. And I think it's really important for us to like have at least a good demo for people to actually see what that's going to look like when it's done. So, yes.
And but what do signage there then too, I suppose?
I'm sorry?
There's signage and stuff, right? I mean, that was part of the original, I thought, so.
Yes.
So do I have a motion for Resolution 24-057?
So I'd like to make a resolution to adopt Resolution 24-057.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Okay, wonderful. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of 24-057, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes next. Resolution 24-058, which is authorizing the president or the administrator an urgent license with landowners along the Upper Riley Creek project area to give them access, construction and maintenance. Would you like to talk about this?
President Peterson, managers, as you know, we are working on the Upper Riley Creek Restoration Ecological Enhancement Project. There are private landowners along the corridor as well as some city-owned properties. I have been in contact with all the private landowners to date. We have two that have already agreed to the access and maintenance agreement. The other five have tacitly agreed to it and have been provided drafts for their review with their own legal counsel. Rather than bringing these back individually over the course of several months, we would like to get moving on this project yet this year, if at all possible. What I'm asking for is, is there is an example agreement, I believe, in your packet. They would all be consistent with that. If any of them materially deviated from what that agreement is, if their attorney came back with some request or demand, we would bring those back to the board. But if these just, these general agreements, we're just asking to be able to work through those with the individual landowners, execute those agreements so that we can move forward with the project. We will be bringing back the city maintenance, the city, why am I blanking on the name of the cooperative agreement, to the board for your review and approval, separate from that. So this does not include that agreement.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-058.
Thank you. I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this?
I think this is a great deal. We need to get moving on this.
Yes. Let's.
Yeah.
All right, so all those in favor of Resolution 24-058, please say aye.
Aye.
No nays, passes five to zero. Next, Resolution 24-059, setting the administrator's delegated spending authority. Mr. Jeffrey?
President Peterson, managers, so in separate meetings with the Governance Committee as well as the Audit and Finance Committee, under the current setting, I can authorize the spend up to $5,000. I have run into numerous instances where this has not been adequate. And so Mr. Welch has drafted a resolution, delegating spending authority. I believe it is based on a model that Rice Creek Watershed District is using that is very clear of the things that I would be able to spend on. I would not be able to, I would have, the administrator, excuse me, would not have authority to spend on any policy matters, anything related to actual policy that they're doing. These are the day-to-day operations to keep the lights on, to pay, pay the bills, pay the utilities, et cetera. This will require, but was already in works, a modification of the governance manual to reference that the managers may delegate by resolution, spending authority to the administrator. I don't know if Mr. Smith has more specificity he would like to add to this or not, but otherwise I'll ask, answer questions as you have them.
Madam President, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just a question, does the, require that the governance manual be updated before this takes effect? Are they being conflict?
Madam President, Manager Nelson, this, this is a really chicken and an egg situation which we've been working on the governance manual for some time. And it, the Governance Committee and the Audit and Finance Committee have looked at changes and both concur in making changes to the authority delegated to the administrator to be set by board resolution. So, but that hasn't been adopted yet. You could wait until the governance manual changes are made and then this action would be perfectly consistent with it. But I think the administrator is saying that there's operational needs to proceed sooner than that. And in that case, we, I think as long as the board is clear, your action on this resolution will be what controls the administrator's authority. And we know that the provisions to the governance manual are, are coming soon.
The resolution actually says in it that the change to the governance manual will, in effect, follow this. We're giving this to him so that he can do things in the meantime and not keep bringing stuff back to us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So the Rice Creek model, does that have a limit on the day-to-day spending per month? It's just as long as it's day-to-day spending, you know, keeping the lights on and the
Maintenance and
Maintenance and security.
HR stuff and, yeah.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I can make another comment, so the section that lists out the various categories, the one through nine?
I'm sorry, can you?
That, the section that's listing out the various categories here, that those are primarily connected with like ACH payments, correct? Or not? Am I missing something?
Primarily connected with, well, President Peterson, Manager Duval, yes, a number of those and that would be a separate resolution that we'll bring back when we decide what it is we want to pay through ACH. But yes, a number of these would be by ACH. And it was the discussion that we had of what are our internal controls for ACH?
Thanks. So I'm sorry, what's ACH? The, the wire payments, the direct payments from the banks rather than through a check?
Clearing house, yeah.
Okay, so Audit and Finance Committee, you're all in a concurrence on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely. President, one, one further clarification. So are we in effect, our resolution, are we saying that this amendment will be sort of superseding what's in the governance manual until it gets updated? Is there, could, should we say that?
It's in, it's in the resolution.
It just says the governance manual be updated as necessary.
I think it's
Which is not really the, quite the same.
I think it says.
There goes it. Am I missing that?
Madam President?
Yes.
Manager Nelson. I think the situation is, this board can't adopt changes to the governance manual this evening because it's not before you.
Okay.
So we want to, as a matter of the record, in the minutes, note that taking this action is consistent with what is anticipated in the governance manual. And we also feel that the specific resolution on the administrator's authority that is this specific spelling out all of these categories is what will control his authority.
Your opinion?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-059, setting administrators delegated spending authority.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So again, do we need this as an individual manager vote or? Okay, so all those in favor of Resolution 24-059, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. So passes five to zero. Now we're on to 24-060, which is designating the two delegates and an alternate for the Minnesota Watershed's annual business meeting and authorizing the delegates to present resolutions. Would you like to comment on that?
President Peterson, managers, every year we need to nominate two delegates and one alternate to the Minnesota Watershed's Business Meeting. And at a prior meeting, I believe it was at our July meeting, you asked us to prepare resolutions regarding Minnesota Wetland Conservation Act, that the watershed be a representative on the technical advisory committee as well as alternate ways of notifying public hearings and et cetera. Mr. Smith has drafted the two resolutions that are in your packet, so he could speak to them more intelligently than I could if you have specific questions about those resolutions. But tonight I'm asking, yes, that you nominate the two delegates and the alternate and then authorize them to present those resolutions at Mawa, Minwa, whatever.
I'd like to nominate David Ziegler, in the fact that he's on the board and really should be there anyway.
I'll second it.
I'd like to nominate Jill Crafton as well.
I'll second that.
For the second one?
Yes, then we need a, then we need a
Delegates and one alternate.
Now we need an alternate.
I'd like to nominate Tom, unless Bonnie's interested. But you have to stay for the extra meeting. Just so you know, there's
The extra day.
Be there for the business.
The two of you have any, this is, you're, you're going to duke this out here.
Happy to do it. I don't know what it is that's required specifically, so that's my only
Then I would suggest that we nominate Tom and you're welcome to come and observe and find out what the heck's going on.
I'm fine. Okay, I'll second that then. Okay, so I believe that we have Manager Ziegler, Manager Crafton is our two main delegates. Our alternate is Manager Duval. And I need a resolution, please, for this, our motion to, to approve it.
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 24-060. Signing the delegates, Crafton, Ziegler and the alternate, Duval.
Yep. And I need a second?
Second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Great. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed, so five, zero. Last item underneath new business, approving change order for additional engineering services budget on task order number 32B for Upper Riley. And I'm assuming Engineer Sobek will be talking about this.
President Peterson, managers, you read my mind. I'm tired of talking, Engineer Sobek.
Managers, what you have before you is a request for consideration of additional budget for the design and permitting for the Upper Riley Creek project. For some time now, we've been including in our monthly engineers' report information suggesting that something like this was forthcoming. In summer of 2022, we discovered that additional permitting was needed to handle a no-rise certificate requiring additional computer modeling that we hadn't anticipated in the budget. At that time, it looked like we had sufficient budget to cover that additional cost along with getting the project across the finish line, the bidding. That didn't turn out to be the case. Not only the additional modeling and back and forth with the city for the no-rise certificate, but we've also got some additional work needed for Met Council permit to be able to work within their easement as well as the delay in the project by adding this decant facility to the project. It's, it's essentially taken a project we had anticipated going to bid in 2023 and now we're looking at hopefully getting it out for bid by the end of 2024. So for that reasons, it's, we've incurred some extra costs and in order to get this thing across the finish line, we're requesting a consideration of $19,500 for an additional budget for engineering, design permitting, stakeholder agreements and so forth. Any questions?
So the big question is, do we have the money?
President Peterson, managers, yes, we have adequate budget right now to cover that. It might require us on our next levy cycle, the 26 levy, to, to pull that extra fund up in the levy. But at this time, yes, we have adequate budget for that.
Yes.
Was this the one that had, would spend so long? Was this the one that had some FEMA issues too? And we were, that was putting us into trouble?
That is absolutely correct. This area is within a FEMA called a Zone AE in their floodplain maps, meaning that they have specific elevations along the creek. Part of the challenge is, is those elevations that are on FEMA's maps are from 1977. The city's never done any updating to this reach of the creek, even though the area's been developed. So it, it presents challenges when you're trying to align with old information, current information. So we've really had to work closely with the city, who is the floodplain administrator for FEMA in this instance. And we've, we've been able to get the, the design tightened up enough so that we're able to show a no-rise, meaning that we're not increasing flood elevations along, anywhere along the reach.
I did try and update all the FEMA maps when I was there, but it didn't go very far.
Peterson, Manager Peterson, is that being done as part of this, updating those maps?
President Peterson?
You don't know?
Manager Nelson, no, it is not.
Okay.
We don't have control over that.
We don't. We have no control.
The, the district could go through and do a whole FEMA floodplain mapping update here. I don't see a need for it if we're able to get the project implemented without the cities on board with being able to do that.
Okay.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the change order for additional engineering services budget on task order 23B.
32.
32B.
32B.
Right.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comment? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the change order for task order 32B, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay, none? So it's five, zero. Now we're on to discussion item A, discuss task orders number 47, 48, 49 and 50.
President Peterson, managers, you'll recognize Mr. Bischoff there. He will be joining us today. We came to the board, oh, nine, 10 months ago now with lake management plans specific to Duck Lake and Mitchell Lake. At that time, the cost of doing those individual lake plans were significant. The board at that time thought, are there things that would be consistent throughout all of our lakes that we could do to offset some of that cost? At the same time, we have now come to the point where we need to update our use attainability assessments for our next iteration of our plan. for our next iteration of our plan. And we have the E HAB and looking at the resiliency within the overall ecosystem, the soils, vegetation, everything else. So we, by we, I mean Joe Bischoff, has prepared four different task orders that covers all of these things. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Bischoff to explain these. And then, again, we are at this time, this is only a discussion, we're not looking for an action from the board, but we would welcome input as to how you think this approach fits with what you had envisioned at that time.
One question before we, he starts, Joe starts. So this is, I mean, we decided too to to take a holistic approach at what we were doing. So I'm assuming that this is part of trying to get us there.
That's exactly correct, yes. Mr. Bischoff.
You ready? Can you hear me?
Oh, yes. We got you.
Okay, good. Okay, well, good evening. Thanks for having me. Sorry I have to do this remotely. I'm in a hotel room in Iowa, but I'm happy to be here with you tonight. As Administrator Jeffrey mentioned, there's a little background of how we got here. The current watershed plan, excuse me, identified a desire for this holistic lake management plans. They always include water quality, really focus on phosphorus because that's the major driver of eutrophication, but wanted to include things like aquatic vegetation, fisheries, shorelines. What are some of the other potential stressors? Is nitrogen an issue? Is chloride an issue? And in that plan, they allocated sixty thousand dollars, you allocated sixty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four, and another two hundred and fifty thousand in twenty twenty-five, and under the line item of UAA updates. And so in December of twenty twenty-three, if you remember, we started talking about a management plan for Duck Lake. And we talked about this more holistic approach where we included plants and some of the other factors. And some of the questions that came up in that meeting were, where can some of the work be conducted district-wide? Are there certain types, like the aquatic vegetation or shorelines, and areas where we could actually do this district-wide for all the lakes and then apply those as the the individual lakes are getting done for management plans? The other question that we were asked is how can we leverage district staff? There's a lot of capability with district staff. How can we best leverage that to get the work done, to try to keep costs down, but also to provide opportunities for district staff? And then where can we build on district efforts? There's a lot of work being done. Josh does a lot of stuff with fisheries management. He did the shoreline assessment. How can we efficiently incorporate that into the system? So we took that feedback. Sorry, my, we took that feedback and started to ask some questions about how we want to approach this. The first thing I want to talk about is what does a holistic watershed and lake management plan include? The first thing we noted that you should note is that we included watershed in that too, because they are linked together. And it's very important to think about the watershed and the lake as interacting components, not just from a hydrology and biology standpoint, but also from a biological standpoint. So our traditional focus has always been on phosphorus. So the question really becomes, should the district consider managing nitrogen? This is a question that we've talked about over the last couple of years. Is nitrogen important in harmful algal blooms? Should the district consider projects for nitrogen management? Are there other stressors there? Chloride for the monitoring program is showing some increasing trends in some of these lakes. Should we address chloride? Should we start thinking about chloride in the management plan? And then the aquatic vegetation and shoreline management. Again, that traditional approach is to just do this lake by lake. We were doing a lake management plan or the UAA. Then you were going and doing a vegetation management plan, then you might do a fisheries management plan, and you might do shorelines. How do we incorporate this or streamline this process a little bit? And so some of the questions that I got asked a lot during that process was, what does a healthy lake aquatic vegetation community and shoreline look like? We talk about managing these systems, but we don't know what the endpoint is. What does that look like when we're done? What does it look like when it's healthy? How do we use some of the scores and information we get from the quantitative data that's being collected and leverage that into a program that gives us a vision for what we want these shorelines, what to look like, what we want the vegetation to look like? And it also can provide some platforms for having some policy discussions at the board level, which is when should the district manage aquatic invasive species? You do aquatic invasive species now. There's been some questions about what species should be controlled, where they should be controlled, and this would provide a framework around some of those discussions so the district can make science-based decisions about how you want to approach AIS management in these lakes. How do we achieve minimal maintenance? What I, when are we done? How do we know what our endpoint is? How do we know that we've achieved ecological health? So we put some tasks in here to to develop some endpoints, quantitative endpoints, to help us measure progress towards those and when we can complete those. And then how do we make meaningful improvements in shoreline conditions? What does it take to really improve that? What does that vision look like? And what are some of the key engineering and ecological components that are necessary to accomplish that? And the last one is fisheries. Fisheries is the easiest one. It's really managed by the Minnesota D N R, but they manage it mostly from a recreational standpoint. You know, they they want to know how many big fish can you pull out? And then the district does their own fisheries management for carp and water quality impacts and fish stocking to control carp reproduction. So there's some question about how do those two work together? And the last one is how how can the district support habitats? So much of the work, excuse me, that you do is really directly related to the habitat for the fisheries that are in there. So that aquatic vegetation, that shoreline condition, if you look at the scores and score the shore, a lot of them are around woody debris and things that represent habitat for fish. So how can the district incorporate those types of activities into their plan to support the D N R fisheries and support the overall water quality and carp management? So these are some of the questions that we kind of mauled around when we were putting these plans together. So what we did was we broke it into three plans. These are three task orders. You have four task orders in front of you, but three task orders that would all be interrelated and need to kind of work together. The first one is the Lake and Watershed Management Plan. This is your more traditional plan. We're going to move away from the UAA terminology if you'll let us. UAA has a specific. It's a specific process within the Clean Water Act, and this, these studies aren't really those specific processes. So I really think we should change that name to avoid any confusion and move it to more like a Lake and Watershed Management Plan or Holistic Lake and Watershed Management Plan. But those plans would include phosphorus. We would update the phosphorus models and understanding based on the data you've already collected or the the models you've already built. We would update with any developments, some of those types of things, but we would also add in nitrogen and chloride. So we're going to take a crack at understanding, should you be managing nitrogen? What are the potential impacts of nitrogen on these lakes? And to do that, we'll use P eight for nitrogen loading, and then we'll use a shallow lake model that's been developed by BAR that can look at both nitrogen and phosphorus and what those ratios, how those ratios might affect the potential for harmful algal blooms. And then this would all develop into a capital improvement plan that could be directly adopted. It'd be like a laundry list of activities that you could adopt into your next plan cycle. The second plan would be a district-wide aquatic vegetation and shoreline plan. The biggest part of this would be some visioning for what does a healthy aquatic vegetation community look like? We would use all the data and and we'd really rely on district staff to help us accumulate all the data. And then we would also use the D N R statewide database to ask the question, what does a species composition look like for a healthy plant community? How would that, how would that look in the lakes that we have? And how do we develop endpoints to say that's what we want to manage to? So it's basically a reference condition that we're developing using the statewide database. And that gives us an endpoint to manage to, and then we have some visions, steps in there to show, be able to show you, what would that look like? You take a cross section of a lake like we have over here on the left-hand part of the slide. You know, what does that look like? What would the species be? How much of the water column would they take up? And I think this is really critical for understanding how you want to manage and balance the use, the lake uses with the ecological health of that. So that's the idea behind that one. We would also tie that into shoreline. All the shoreline data has already been collected and collated by the district. So really, it's just a matter of developing some vision for what those shorelines would look like and identifying the key components. So the way Score the Shore works is there's scores for different parts, like woody debris, native vegetation, developed shoreline, there's all these components of that. We would identify the key ones that are missing district-wide, and we would develop some cut sheets associated with that to say, here's the types of solutions that should be implemented in any lakeshore restoration. And then that would support any kind of funding from the district. If you had a grant project, you could say, listen, we'll support, we'll do a cost share program with you for shoreline. Here's the key components that we need to see as a part of that shoreline restoration to make sure that we're actually moving towards the endpoint that we want to achieve, which is better ecological health. So it gives us a quantifiable roadmap to get to that endpoint, but it also gives us materials to say, this is how you get there when these lake restorations are getting done and gives you a discussion point around how you want to fund that or how you want to promote that type of program. And finally, the Fisheries Management Plan is probably the simplest one, just because we would develop a partnership with the D N R, develop the district's role in fisheries management, and then try to link it to those, excuse me, to Score the Shore and some of those other pieces. So hopefully what I've kind of painted for you is a vision of how we would do this all district-wide and create tools for the district to implement a roadmap towards improved ecological health and do it in a way that has some quantifiable endpoints so you can show progress. So the goal would be, after five years of implementation, here's how much progress we've made. We've added this much additional habitat. We've improved these scores. We've improved these metrics, things like that. And so you can track that over time. So that's kind of the vision with the plans. Just moving along here, we would leverage the district and city studies. I've already mentioned the shoreline assessment. There's a lot of aquatic plant management that's already been done and surveys by the district that's been completed. We obviously would leverage all the work from the D N R for the Fisheries Management. You have your ecological health assessment. That would be part of what we would do for the watershed component, where we're doing the modeling and tying in some of those pieces to how it would link to ecological health and water quality in the lakes. And then obviously, we have the previous UAA studies where we have P eight models, swim models. We already have some sediment coring studies. So all that was considered when we were developing these work plans and these cost estimates. One of the key things we were asked is how do we leverage district staff? You guys have a lot of capabilities. Quite honestly, some of what we're doing, like the Fisheries Management Plan, is taking what Josh already does and all the information Josh has in it in his head and putting it into a plan. So if something happened to Josh, we would know all those things that he was doing, right? Because he he really runs a lot of your programs, and he does a great job with that and makes it happen. So this would just be laying it out in a plan and then looking at how it interacts with some of the other pieces that are going on out there. So we would leverage that. All the public outreach would be done by led by the district. Liz would lead all that. I know you have great graphic design capabilities, so we put all that on the district's plate to do those cut sheets. We would give you the technical information, and then the cut sheets would be developed by the district staff and those types of pieces. And obviously, the district staff would lead coordination with the D N R. The partnership is yours. It's between the district and the D N R, not between BAR and the D N R. So we would really have Josh or whoever the district identifies be the lead on that to develop those partnerships to move forward with that. So finally, I know this is kind of long, I'm sorry, but just kind of wanted to give you a lot of background on on how we got to where we are. We picked four lakes. We identified Lake Susan, Lake Lucy or Lucy Lake, Mitchell Lake and Red Rock Lake. How did we do that? We just asked some questions and put them in a matrix, which we can share if you want to see that. Is the lake a headwater lake? Does the lake discharge a downstream lake that's meeting water quality standards? So in the case of Lake Susan, fixing Lake Susan will protect all the investment that you put into Rice Marsh Lake and Lake Riley, which have excellent water quality at the moment. How recent is the last UAA study? Is there updated pond information? The cities have been out inspecting ponds. There's a lot of new information from the city of Eden Prairie. We can leverage that into more effective project identification. Which lakes have chloride, increasing chloride trends based on your monitoring? And which lakes need more information for project identification? So those are the lakes that came out. What you see before you are two work plans, one for Lucy Anne and Susan. We included Anne because they're a chain of lakes, and it just made sense to put those together into a group with the watershed. It would be weird to kind of do the upstream lake and the downstream lake. You'd have to figure out what's going on in the lake in between just to be able to link those together. And then we put Mitchell and Red Rock together. There was a lot of work done from the city of Eden Prairie and pond inspection. There's also, those two lakes are right on the cusp of meeting the standard, and they have some biological interactions. I do believe that Red Rock Lake water quality oscillates with the fisheries. So there's some interesting problems that need to be addressed there that go beyond just a water quality component. So finally, what are you going to get? So if you spend the money, what are you going to get? Well, it's a list of concept level projects for inclusion in the plan. That's the heart of what we do. Phosphorus, we would do phosphorus, you know, what projects can you do to improve phosphorus conditions? But we would also talk about, should you be reducing nitrogen? If you should be reducing nitrogen, what are some of the projects or types of programs that you can pursue there? And then chloride management, what can be done there and will it have an impact? And that would also include some fisheries projects or potential projects. So I envision this as a laundry list that could be adopted in the plan, in that planning process, or aquatic plants and shorelines. You'd have that roadmap for aquatic vegetation and shorelines. How do you improve the ecological condition of those in a quantifiable way? So you'd have endpoints, you'd have metrics to measure change. And this would really facilitate your your policy discussions when you're thinking about how does the district want to approach those? And finally, you'd have some roles and partnerships with Fisheries Management. So you'd have a more discreet plan with clear roles and responsibilities to improve the fisheries that would link to some of those other factors that are out there. I did put a cost estimate together. You see the work plans. If you want more details, we can certainly talk about those. They are in the work plans that are before you. But the these were the costs. So the total cost, if we did them all, is around three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to do that, which is over what the budgeted amount was. However, there is some cost savings if we were to do them together. The P eight modeling, if you're doing all these lakes together, there's just some efficiency when you're just sitting down and cranking out those models. So there's probably a little bit of cost savings in there that could be realized. I didn't incorporate those. And at this point, just from the aspect of, I didn't know what direction you wanted to go. So with that, I think that's all I have. Questions?
So what would be the timing? I mean, if it's all within the the next tenure plan, I'm assuming?
Yes, so the the next tenure plan is probably going to start, I don't know, Scott or Terry, if you know. It'll start in the next year, year and a half, because it's due in two years. And so you need to have some of that background information to put up into that. So our schedule for this is to be done with all of this by the end of next year, and that's just within your budget cycle too. But I think we'd really be focusing on trying to get it done in that September, October framework. So you have time to adopt and get what you need by the end of the year with that type of process.
President Pedersen, manager, Ziegler, to your question, we will begin our next plan update in earnest in January, February of next year. So this would go concurrently with that. So this portion then will help us guide our capital projects, our our education outreach, our cost share programs, those other things. So it would happen concurrently.
I guess I would like to see the priority, you know, the matrix for determining the priority. I think one of the things you mentioned was about, you know, the ones that are on the cusp of meeting the requirements and some quick wins are always always nice to have. We can get some more lakes delisted. So I I think that's good, but I think it would be good to, you know, for the watershed district to actually have the the logistics of the prioritization. Because we're going to have to explain it to the people who are on lakes or here.
Get on that list, yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to have to explain it to any lake residents that happen to have different opinions because they live on lakes. I don't live on a lake. Yeah.
Yep, we can get those.
I have some questions, but Tom had, excuse me.
So I guess the the general question, it kind of fits on David's question. I think Joe mentioned that this fits into some elements of the E HAB plan that we're working on fleshing out. So I'm presuming that a lot of this work is 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 building out components of the plan, the E HAB plan that we're working on. And then that sort of, it's like a building block basis where we build this thing out, and then the budget fits in here, and if we can describe the differences why we're doing this versus the next two lakes. But it sort of lays the groundwork to do the whole system, doesn't it?
President Pedersen, managers, a number of the items that are in this will be will be used district-wide, will apply to any lakes, the cut sheets that he's talking about, things of that nature. He also mentioned not calling it. He also mentioned not calling it UAA. UAA is very specific. It's really just looking at phosphorus loading from an area. So in this plan, it would look at the entire watershed, he said, and the different components within that. So yes, while it isn't, it is integral to what we want to do with E HAP.
So would these, any of these concepts apply to other areas of E HAP, just the approach we're taking?
President Pedersen, Manager DeVal. Yes, I would have to look through more the, how the lake watershed plan is is supplanting the UAAs to to give you specificity of that. But yes, that's the reason to move away from UAAs so that we can look at the watershed.
So it seems like, I mean, this is this is part of the building block for a really even broader plan for the watershed for the next ten years. So this is, I mean, we're doing, this is some of the foundational work. I don't know. I don't know how to put it.
That's it.
Connect that's.
Yeah, you just put it up. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question.
Yes.
So Joe, I don't know if you were on earlier, but more and more like, so I'm on Bowser and everything's kind of focused on resiliency. And I remember months ago when we started this conversation, I thought it was with you about how do you measure health? And it just seems to me that resiliency would give us more flexibility because, I mean, based on what kind of weather we get or ice outs or whatever, that may affect the health of the aquatic plants that are there. I mean, just, I don't know if things die out or if we get invasives that come in or whatever, but so I wondered whether that made sense to you to to think of it more in terms of resiliency? Because that's where the state's going with climate resiliency and everything. Could we, but would that match up better with metrics or not? Or it's just adding too much?
I really think the metrics that we've adopted or that we're talking about adopting are metrics that revolve around resiliency. If you think about a biodiverse lake, like a aquatic plant community that has biodiversity and minimal, or it's resilient to invasion from aquatic invasive species. I mean, that's, those are the types of resiliency that I'm talking about. From a weather flooding resiliency, Scott, you would have to probably talk about that more. But I do think that we would talk about from a shorelines, water level elevation and balance would probably have to be part of that discussion. And that's, that's a resiliency. Do you have resilient, healthy community shorelines that can handle the balance and climate change and some of those other pieces? So I do think that that term resiliency is built into when I talk about ecological function or ecological eco services, that resiliency is really built into that. If you have a healthy ecological system, those are your most resilient systems. Now, we do live in a built environment and so we are going to have to consider when we do these metrics, what's achievable within the within the parameters of the built environment. We can't go back to Prairie, but can we build a resilient plant community that can handle the best built environment condition that we have? So it'd be questions like that that I think we would work through as the plans go through.
I just wondered whether we needed to incorporate it into the title of what we're doing or not, but you got this covered. The other thing that I was wondering about, because I know other watershed districts are having issues with shorelines. Specifically, I think in some of the one watershed one plants like Tara was talking about. She's got an SWCD that's putting in rock and she doesn't want that. She wants trees. And so the question is more, and I was going to try to reach out to Sarah Stroman, but are they doing anything to upline, up upgrade the standards for shoreline restoration or for how many trees or something more resilient in terms of a shoreline habitat?
Yeah, I don't know. Excuse me. I don't know if they're updating any programs or those, but that's the whole idea of our cut sheets is to say, look, if you do a shoreline restoration, we don't want you just going out and putting rock. Here's what it would incorporate to improve fish habitat. So we'd want this kind of woody debris. We'd want to armor the toe in this way. We'd want to have native vegetation in this way. And so you would have the tools to go out when these restorations are getting done to say, this is what we want. And then the board could consider if you wanted to do some kind of shoreline overlay, I don't know if you would call it an ordinance or what you would do, but do an overlay and say, if you do a shoreline restoration, these are the types of practices that are expected from the district. And it would give you the the tools to really do that district wide. And certainly we can reach out to the DNR and see what they're doing, if they have already figured out some of these things that we can adopt those, but there's a lot of good stuff in the score of the shore that can allow us to do that.
Well, there's something that just came out. Terry, I don't know who sent it to me, but I think it was out of a program on NPR.
Yes.
But they've got stories with the DNR and it's all about doing really good habitat on your shoreline. So I, I got the sense from the discussion that DNR is part of that. Maybe we could put some pressure on or ask, make some asks or what should we the ask be, I guess, for me, but.
President Pedersen Managers, as Mr. Vishoff was presenting, one of the things I did think about is, okay, we partner with the DNR Fisheries. One of our how to phrase this? One of the impediments to our aquatic plant management is that the DNR themselves have you have your AIS people here and then you have your recreational, some guy wants to clear a shoreline. Is there a way we can start getting all these? Can we just say, okay, you got to get your permit through us? I don't think I want to take on that permitting, but some way that all of these parties are talking to each other. I know we, we've had two big illicit treatments on Lotus and on Red Rock this summer. We, we will treat Lotus Lake and then there'll be maybe twenty-five or thirty individual permits given out to treat it so they start to pile on each other. So yes, to your point, yeah, I think, you know, I know when, when the DNR tried to change their shoreline rules, what was it, seven years ago now? So that, whoo, that didn't go over well, but you know, maybe the temperament's there now, maybe.
It's a shift in political and who's in charge. I remember that. I just went nowhere here.
Considering that the fact that we're losing one to two percent of our shorelines on all of our lakes in the state, I think people are starting to figure out, you know, lawns maybe aren't the answer, you know? So I, I do think there's going to be a shift if it hasn't already happened.
And I'm seeing it just with my, so I'm part of the stop cart coalition. So we're meeting with DNR people every month at least, and they brought in some really good people like Grace Lautner and she's just amazing. And they're actually talking to people now. It's not a closed culture like it used to be. They're talking to USGS and Fish and Wildlife Service and other DNRs and especially with the putting in the barrier at two oh five. But really taking a look at native fish. I mean, that was this last meeting, they had people talking about what's going on with the native fish because they want solutions that aren't just going to be a barrier that they're more holistic in terms of me. So I just wondered if there's a conversation there that we could should have with DNR because if they've brought in those experts and they expanded the whole scope of that, can we move that over shorelines too?
Yeah, I think there's definitely a conversation to be had.
Okay.
And I will say.
Go ahead, Joel.
I was just going to say, real quickly, one of the things from the fisheries aspect is there's a fish IBI being developed, an index of biotic integrity. And they're doing stressur analysis with that. And one of the main things is just connecting the folks at the DNR with the district to figure out how much has been done on our lakes? How can we apply these metrics to our lakes? And that's really focused on the native fish. It's not focused on the recreational fishery. So some of this are these little silos that are out there managing or providing information that is not out in the forefront that we don't know about. It's bringing all that together so that the district can be kind of a co-ulator of information and you could just have a one year, you know, every year check in with the DNR. Hey, what are you doing? How are we doing this? This is what our plan is. And if you have a plan, you can go to them and be like, remember you agreed to do this with us. What are we doing this year? That's kind of the vision for the Fisheries Plan that I think would be really helpful in moving it forward together and breaking down some of those silos a little bit.
Well, then we can beat the boots on the ground for them so that.
Absolutely.
I, I think that's a huge way. How can we help you? Kind of an approach and.
Correct.
Yeah.
So just to clarify for myself, the choice of the lakes that you've got on here, which is Susan Anne Lucy and Mitchell Red Rock, you're just starting with them to see how this would work. Am I right about that, Joel?
Correct. I mean, we, we didn't, excuse me, I mean, Lake Riley and Rice Marsh Lake are in great shape and you have pretty good projects selected. You have projects to continue to protect those lakes. So those kind of fall off the list. And so we gave you the ones that are really in need of some water quality improvement and ecological improvement that are close to the water quality standard and that we could apply this. Now, the other two, the Fisheries and the Shorelines and the Vegetation, that's going to be all the lakes. That'll incorporate all the lakes. So that'll be district wide. So there's a lot of information kind of pieces, but those are the ones where we'd really tie it all together into specific plans, adopting the information from those other two plans to really put together a roadmap for that lake.
President Pedersen, but yeah, so if, if the managers decide this is great, we should do this with idle line, we should do this. There's nothing that would preclude us other than money from, from doing that for other lakes as well. You know, it is my, yeah, it is my thought that we would eventually have this district wide. But this is going to go so well that, that we'll be able to use it everywhere to really start to rethink the way we manage lakes and watersheds.
If incorporated rough fish, I mean, they're not calling them whatever they used to call them.
Right.
So they're native rough fish at this point. So they are expanding and.
Any other manager comments?
I have.
Yes, go ahead.
I have some comments. I just, I really like the idea of, I guess I would call it a lake watershed plan. I think the terminology of this, we need to be careful. I mean, especially if we're partnering with the DNR. So maybe be better consistent to use like hydrologic areas that we're working on or like lake watersheds versus other things, but just, just a thought. I really like addressing nitrogen chloride. Not sure why it was, the chloride was limited to the city and county, maybe just because the data is easily available. Just sort of, there's a lot of, I mean, we've got Highway five, there's a lot of commercial, private applicators, residents, at least a nod to what they're, and you know, that conversation that could be had. You know, I don't, again, how detailed you get, but at least a nod to that, a percentage.
We could, President Pedersen Manager, yeah, we can certainly reach out to MinDOT. I just, we don't know how.
I'd say acknowledging that these are the levels. We may not have numbers for everything or it may not be worth getting numbers. It was just not limiting it to identifying these are our only sources.
And a, a big part of this is going to be identifying where these loads are coming from. And if we discover that it's Highway five, then that's where we'll.
Because with Lake Susan, you've got the whole, you know, of the the commercial business is along the frontage road there. So it's a lot of private applicators.
That's a big.
That would be, so I didn't see that addressed. And also I'm not sure how, say wakeboards, the impact on the floor, where that fits into, whether it's sediment chemistry or or in-like options, I don't, but I'd like to see that addressed or at least the door, the door left open for getting the information for the University of Minnesota.
I would agree with that. I think that's a pretty big thing.
Joe, have you heard from the U of M lately where they're at with phase two of their study?
Not heard from them recently and where they're at with the sediment resuspension study. We will be talking about at the next meeting as we do the Lotus Lake study. We've been, there was questions about how do we, is there a way that we can develop a statistical design or some kind of study to look at how the wake boats might impact an alum treatment? And we've been thinking about that and we were hoping that maybe the next meeting we could talk about a way to address that and a way to measure that. That's certainly, it's a longer topic than I think we want to get into tonight, but we certainly can talk about the relationship between sediment resuspension and alum treatment, aquatic vegetation, those all fit together and we need to learn. So I think that's really critical and a great point.
And then my, my final comment was on, and here there's partnerships and public hearings and reaching out to stakeholders and I'm, we've talked about seeing if the managers could have a role in this and would like to address them there. Or at least keep the door open for us to have a role in developing those relationships. I think that's important.
So can I, if I can just make a quick comment on that, that was really to be led by the district. So we didn't address it in our part of that work plan that you have before you. Ours was just the support from the technical information and provide that to the district. That's really up to the district staff to develop that plan. And then we just have time in there to support that. So I do think that I agree with you a hundred percent. That was to be led by the district and I don't think that that's totally been fleshed out at this point of what that process would look like.
Any other comments from any of the other managers or questions?
So one, one question I guess is, you know, it is a lot of money and it's pretty compressed timeframe. So we're going to need something from staff telling us, you know, where is this money going to come from?
President Pedersen, Manager Ziegler, I have not fully vetted that out yet. So I don't want to give you an answer that isn't.
Sure, I'm not.
But yeah, I will, I will have an answer for you at the next meeting or the subsequent one, whichever one we bring it back to you. When I do bring it back, I'll have an answer for where the funding will come from.
Any other questions or comments? I think this is a big step forward, considering that it was all teeny tiny little E H A's that we were going to have. Looking at it on a more holistic view is just wonderful step forward, I think.
Yeah, Joe did a good job here.
Yeah, thank you, Joel.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, our next couple of items are an update on the lawsuits against the district. Do we need to go to closed session?
Madam President, we would recommend the Ford adopt a motion
Yes.
to go into closed session for the purpose of receiving confidential legal advice concerning litigation strategy in two lawsuits that are pending with the district. One is Larry Cook versus Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District and Terrence Jeffrey. This concerns the Spring Road Conservation Project. And the second lawsuit is Larry Cook versus Hennepin County, Carver County, Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District, Bonnie Nelson and Jill Crafton. This concerns the appointment process for two managers.
I saw move.
Good, great. And we need a individual or can we just do an I?
Just a vote.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. So we'll meet in the.
We'll go in there to make it easier on Mr. Monaher.
Okay, thank you.
Microphone.
Microphones?
Microphone.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Bonnie.
David. So I've had kind of scratchy notes in the past and this is a little bit less scratchy, but it still has some scratch marks on it. And it's just highlighting a few of the things that I've worked on since our last meeting. And again, I've done it just as a ambassador of the the watershed, not on any official business with any of these meetings. So I just go down the list here fairly quickly. It's had a virtual meeting with Administrator Jeffrey and Council Smith dealing with some of the governance manual issues. And again, we've got things that are kind of going back and forth and we'll get that resolved pretty soon. And then I had a coffee meeting with two of the staff people at City of Minnetonka, Leslie Yedka, former board member. And she's now the Natural Resource Manager and Sarah Schweiger, Water Resource Engineering Coordinator. Both at the city, they work in different departments. I've met with them a couple of times. Both seem like they're really engaged and enjoyable to talk with. So on the second page, I put together my version of a one-page kind of a cheat sheet on the on the E HAP project. And again, just kind of as a discussion sheet to look at topics when talking to people, at least for me as a, as a guide. But anyway, I brought this to the coffee meetings and just not that it went through it point by point by any means, but basically talked about how we are proceeding to develop that plan and hoping to finalize it soon. And then looking at ways it might impact both of our organizations, the city as well as the watershed. And then just in the course of the dialogue, you know, they would talk about some of the things they were working on and some of the issues. And then just in the course of the dialogue, you know, they would talk about some of the things they were working on and some of the issues. And then we, we started to connect some of the dots and, and they suggested a couple of areas that we might consider talking to at some point as we get further along, at least with EHAP is the, the park board, because they thought they had a lot of connections with activities that we're, that we're dealing with. And then there's a relatively newer sustainability commission that I've attended one meeting and I was the only one at the meeting. And they, I remember we're talking about, uh, touring the refuse plant downtown. But anyway, they, they're dealing with some of the same issues and I, I got a sense that uh, we could maybe connect with them. So I guess, uh, at some point, you know, if we wouldn't consider doing or developing our own short EHAP presentation. And again, I don't know how that would look or what it would look like, but, um, maybe a, a, a version of what Joe did here tonight, where we would have something on the shelf where we could talk about it as it relates to these different groups. Um, city is also working on a pilot low salt design, planning and permitting process. And again, I wasn't aware of that. Again, some of these things you're probably all aware of, but I wasn't. And I, I'm kind of giving you my perspective of these.
They're doing some of that work with Nine Mile Creek?
They are. I think they are.
I know.
Yep.
They mentioned the Isaac Walton League and they, they're using the salt watch. And I don't know if they're doing the night rate wash, but there's a hub, you can put that information in and be able to track it.
They mentioned it. And, but again, the key thing is, was not, uh, not dealing with the after effect of the salt, but trying to work it into their permitting process and planning process, uh, to deal with that whole concept. And then the other thing they suggested is relating to climate resiliency is the vulnerability assessments of relating to flooding. And it sounds like that's an issue that's coming up in different areas of the city. And again, and, and adaption plans. And again, I don't know if there's any way we can plug into that, but it seems like maybe there is at some point. And then briefly talked about, uh, the rules and a lot of the permits that we're dealing with. Now, again, this is my perspective and I don't have the long history of some of the rest of you, but it seems like we're spending a lot of time on variances. We have the basic rules and, and there's a lot of attention drawn to the variances and how do we deal with them? And are they adequate? And do we have workarounds? So, so again, their, uh, staff is very interested in engaging with us when, when we've got our final plan together and continue to talk about how that relates. And then I had a, a audit and finance committee meeting. I guess we talked about that a little bit. That's ongoing and it's kind of a conglomeration of the audit and finance committee meeting and the governance committee and just our general actions. And the second meeting I had with the city is, uh, this was a couple of weeks ago with Robert Ellis, the Public Works Director of City Eden Prairie. And I, and again, I know you all have uh, interactions with them on, on a number of different levels, but again, from my perspective, I'm not, I'm not the engineer from the watershed district, or I'm not from our engineering talking to them. So we have, we have a different discussion, at least it's not from a engineering focus. Anyway, I went through the same thing again and talked about how we might engage beyond and before permits and move upstream in resolving problems. He, he brought up the notion that Eden Prairie was going through a new ownership and they're looking for investment tax financing from the city. So they have, they have brand new owners and as soon as they get some money, they're, they're looking at a grand plan of doing something similar to maybe, uh, Rose or Ridgedale, where they have a lot of housing connected with the shopping center and, and condos and everything connected with it. So it sounds like it's, uh, taken shape to be a potentially really big project for the city. And, and I, I suggested the meetings we had with Chan House and where they, before they started their permitting process with us, they actually came in and started talking about what they were going to do. And so they got feedback from us before they actually filed the permit. So he thought that was a good idea and maybe that's something we ought to entice them to do as they get closer. If they don't do it on their own. He also mentioned that, again, maybe, maybe they all want to be involved with our rule process, but he, sounded like he'd be really interested in whenever we get our, our tech group together again and looking at updating the rules. Again, with the idea of adapting to the fact that when the rules were developed, things looked different than they look today. So maybe we revisit the rules with the picture of the view of the world we have now and what it might look five or 10 years out. So again, we're not dealing with variances, but we're dealing with fixes to the problems. And then the last item is I, I was on the barge tour yesterday and all I could think about was getting on one of the grain barges before I'd been there and wondering where they had the outhouses positioned and the folding chair set up. And it turned out to be one of those riverboats and I'd never been on one before. So.
You're all set.
It was a pleasant cruise. But anyway, there were seven speakers. I attached the two, or two-page flyer at the end, talking about the program that was put on and it had, it lists the speakers, seven speakers. They didn't really talk about any of the locations along the, um, Minnesota River in terms of the stops, but it was interesting. So I met.
How much sediment was in the water?
Um, they didn't say, they said it's growing and it's growing rapidly.
How could it be growing? It was already so black five years ago.
We did one of those years ago. And it was just.
It was much.
Brown.
No, this is, well, it's brown. It's still brown. I mean, I mean, it looks like, kind of like pea soup, you know, of sorts. But, but the water level's been so high this year that, you know, it's changed the whole dynamic of the situation again in the area. So anyway, I met with several, there were several city council people there from, um, not Chaska, but Chakapie. There was one county commissioner, not our, well, the other one county commissioner there, the state agencies. Um, again, they talked about, uh, opportunities for partnerships. Again, that seemed like a common theme everywhere is to develop partnerships. And from what I've seen going to the various conferences, we have a lot of data floating around. It's not necessarily data that's easily connectable or transferable, but maybe it is. So it seems like people are kind of developing their own solutions to everything and they have responsibilities and, and situations that are not connected necessarily. And, and so we're part of that equation too. So it seems like, seems like we should be connected in, in as many ways as we possibly can. And I know we're working on a number of different areas. So they talked about the levels of phosphate, nitrate and chloride in the river is, is continuing to increase. It continues to go up every year. The meteorologists or the climatologists who was there was talking about, based on all the storms, the storms are getting less frequent, but bigger. And the small storms are becoming less frequent. So again, it's dealing with runoff. And we can't just figure out a solution to push the water down to, on somebody else's situation. We have to deal with it on our own circumstance. And then just a general notion of, uh, we have grass, the equivalent of grass concrete in our systems. And so even though it looks like it should be working, it's not doing anything. So again, that gets to our EHAP, I think. So anyway, this, so one of the notions that seems from all of these things possibly with our new land is if we can get involved with studies with storm runoff and erosion studies, it would seem like a natural to be doing some of those things on parcels of our land. Anyway, those are my observations.
Oh, good. Any other manager comments this evening?
Um, I guess just to comment on what you'd reported, Tom, is when we did the EHAP workshops, um, one of the things I tried to push into questions that we were using to direct the discussion was exactly what you're talking about, asking them where their priorities are and trying to figure out how we can do win-win kind of things. And I think that's, that's hugely important for where we're going. Um, I think our staffs work well with their staff at Minnetonka in particular. And, um, well, I know our staff works with Nine Mile, so, and, and I'm not sure what Nine Mile's doing, but I just think there's so much emphasis at the state level on partnerships and everybody's, it's just a way to be more efficient and connect the dots. But there are also, I guess the other thing I wanted to bring out is our cities are green stuff cities. They have sustainability commissions and there are at least 29 best practices. If, I think EI, DEI or DEI was the 30th, but they don't know if they adopted that, but, excuse me. But there, there might be some leverage there with what they're trying to accomplish in terms of energy. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff, land use and building management. And there's like six or seven categories. So there might be something in there that would fit with what we're trying to do to try and help us leverage things for better with stormwater management. So I, I know stormwater management is one of them. But anyways, thank you for reaching out, being our ambassador.
Anybody else?
So just.
They're continuing. Go ahead.
So, um, as far as like Minnesota watershed is concerned, they're still working on the agenda for the, uh, annual meeting. The administrative executive director's husband had an incident with a table saw.
Oh, no.
And yeah, so he was in the hospital a couple of days and he came home minus part of two of his fingers.
Middle and his index.
Doesn't look too bad. They're bandaged up, so.
It's on his non-dominant hand at least. It's on its non-dominant hand.
It's on his right hand.
Jen told me it was his non-dominant hand.
Really?
Maybe he's a lefty.
I don't know. I, maybe I misunderstood. She said it was his, he was right-handed and it was on his right hand. But anyway, his thumb was also bandaged up significantly in the picture of his grandchild. But, you know, it looked like most of his fingers were, you know, those two. Because these fingers were unaffected, the little finger and that. But the, the partial amputation part was his index finger and his middle finger. Anyway, that slowed her down a little bit.
Yeah.
And you had some.
I just, um, actually ended up having happy hour today with a neighbor next to our beach lot. And she has 75 feet of land on Lotus Lake. And she was just, she had done a grant probably five years ago and it's totally weeds. And she goes, I'm just so tired of it. I'm going to rip it all up, bring in a landscape company, put turf all the way to the end, hardscape it. She goes, but I like this. I'm okay with it. I just didn't know what to do. I had no one to help. So here's a person that has total length of, and she wants to keep it that way, but she needs help. So just, and I also, our lakeshore that we have there has also gone to pieces and there's room there for improvements as well. So I don't, just saying, I, that's, that's two properties I know on the lake that are, you know, potentially interested in, in doing the right thing, but might need some support.
President Peterson, managers, this is one of the things I keep coming back to when we talk about, um, some of the expertise we have on the CAC. Cause there are members there, there are members of wild ones or other things, uh, cause we, cause yeah, those are, you know, the, those are unfortunate, uh, Chan House and elementary, Bluff Creek elementary, they wanted to pull their payroll because they couldn't manage it anymore. And then as we've discussed, President Peterson, companies don't want to deal with these smaller things anymore. They want 30, 40, 50 acre plots. They don't want to, so, um, yeah, it, it's, it's a conundrum that I've been trying to figure out how to do. And if we can leverage the CAC, that'd be great or Master Gardeners or something.
So nine years ago, I put in a project at, uh, Battle Lake. And the project was funded by the Battle Lake Lake Association. It's a, about a $30,000 project. And what I ended up doing was using more shrubs than I did, um, native perennial plants. And they have a certification that they actually go through and look at things. I was down there for my mother-in-law's funeral and they have, on our lakeshore, we have 11 feet more of lakeshore than the neighbors do who only have riprap. And the lake association actually came through and graded how our response was over a period of time. And we have this big certificate now in the cabin that we did really good. But if anybody wants pictures of what that really does, I don't think that people just really understand. You're preserving what shoreline you have. And that's only in a period of seven or eight years. That's 11 feet different. So it, it's definitely worth it. You just need to know what to put in and how to take care of it.
Well, I mean, we could have, Seth could go out and meet with them.
That'd be.
Okay. I just, I, you know, I, I obviously said I can't do anything personally. I could try and find her someone, but I just, we're looking so hard for things to improve the shoreline. And when you have someone who says, I've got 75 feet, I'm willing to do something. That's a big offer. And she has a huge lawn and she'd probably come up, she'd probably, you know, if there, she'd do more upland stuff very likely too.
Yeah. Tell her to call me. We'll figure something out.
We talked about that at the work, one of the workshops, EHAP workshops. And I was asking Seth, Seth about it because I said, I mean, you guys are getting a ton of money from the state to build capacity in your SWCD. Why, why can't some of that capacity be directed to maintenance? Because the cities are going to need maintenance. We're needing maintenance for what you're talking about. I tried to talk to Leigh Anne Buck about it, but she didn't quite get it. And, but I think that's something we should pursue because, I mean, they're getting considerable amount of money. Well, 11 million dollars a year, but that's for all of the counties.
I can talk to.
But to build, to build capacity, it just seems like a no-brainer. It's, it's job security for those people.
I can call Mike. Mike's usually really helpful. So.
There's a whole lot of funding out there to put plant materials in, but there's not a whole lot of knowledge about how to take care of it once it's in. People just assume, we'll just put down these few things here and it's just all going to be perfect. And that is in fact, not like that at all whatsoever, not at all.
We need a state maintenance.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, what's going to happen to all the buffers from the.
Exactly.
Another thing that, um, people tend to forget about is, okay, the lakeshore can be protected by the aquatic plants, the emergent plants, uh, as well as the upland plants. And the aquatic plants can do a really good job of keeping waves from reaching the shore.
And with ice heaves as well.
Yeah. Ice heaves.
Ice heaves. Yeah. Yeah. What happens in a lot of circumstances, especially if you've got more of a shallow area, the, the lake freezes and then it shifts and, and it just heaves up against the shore and ends up creating giant berms that are just, you know.
Plants can help that?
Yeah. The plant, the aquatic plants can actually help stabilize that a bit more as well as the plants on the shoreline. So, and I know that just because of the number of years I've been doing this, so.
But, uh, reeds and stuff like that, that doesn't spread it too much.
Well, that's the problem, you know, it's.
Always a trade-off.
Some of the lily pads.
Well, we have lily, there's lily pads along these areas. So that's, that is there.
All right. So I think that kind of concludes us for this evening. I think you all can see where the upcoming board topics are. And anything on the upcoming events you need to say? Anything about Terry?
Oh, I was going to mention, I am enrolled in tribal state relations training.
Thanks for saying that.
And going to be in November. And so I tried to get information for Terry to see, because he's interested.
Thank you. Yeah. That's how I want to reach out to her tomorrow and see if I can get into it.
Did that. It's excellent training.
I did the one for Fond du Lac up there.
Yeah, I have a question for Terry Jeffrey. Uh, the Minnesota Water Resource Conference, anything, is anybody going to that at all this year?
All of us are, I think, right?
They usually do.
The university conference.
Oh, you mean the one, he means the one that's in December, usually downtown St. Paul.
Yeah, the one that's in downtown St. Paul. It's a Minnesota Water Resource Conference. Yeah.
It's in October.
Yep.
It's October 15th and 16th.
Yep.
We're all going?
No.
Nobody's going?
Nobody's going.
Wants to go. Wants to go.
Yeah, I mean, that's the better.
I've gone the first two years and I've always thought had some great topics.
It can be wonderful.
Not everything.
So there's a lot that's pretty technical. There's also always a large percent that has to do with outstate, you know, drainage issues. And, and it's not terribly applicable to what we do here.
Well, wetlands, I mean, there's.
Well, there's, it depends, it depends on the year and who's presenting that, so.
I always learn something.
Why, do we have money to do this, Terry, if anybody wants to go?
It'll be up to these managers if you want to.
Okay, contact Terry.
I guess I'd like to look at the agenda, it must be. I know they've been taking abstract for a while, but I didn't know where we are in terms of agenda.
Yeah, I, I know they've, they've all said, I haven't seen the agenda yet or not.
Up to two managers can go?
Well.
Well, usually we all go.
I can't, I.
I was thinking we had two interested.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, just let me know if, if the managers are okay with.
Yes, I'm fine. Are you fine, Bonnie? People want to go?
I am, looking at it. No, I'm, I'm fine, I mean, it's always a good education.
I'm fine if people want to.
Okay, all right, I think we all agree if people want to go, fine.
Zach says the agenda is up.
Vote on that? Okay.
I think it sounds like all of us agree that if people want to go, they can.
Is that.
Is it pretty ineligible? I need that information too from you all.
Pretty ineligible, yes.
I guess we'll submit it if I.
Motion for the minutes.
Okay, looks like we need a motion for the minutes. Someone like to make a motion for that?
Okay, I move that, how do you want to put it?
Managers.
Managers are, yeah, if managers are interested in attending the Water Resource Conference put on by the University of Minnesota, they, they need to contact Terry and let him know.
And it would be pretty ineligible.
I'll second.
All right, and it would be pretty ineligible.
And all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And no nays? All right, there we go. So I'm entertaining a motion for us to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
I'll second if nobody else.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
And no one says nay.
It's not even technical.
Thank you all very much.